Call the zoning commission regular meeting to order on December 7, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting if additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Judy Rolle, please.
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
And the audience is alternate Chado. Trustee Augustine, zoning inspector Wilson. Is anyone virtual?
Trustee Haasway.
Thank you.
Our first order of business is a review of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from November 2, 2023. There were a couple edits that Lynn suggested after I emailed them to you, so just let me run through them. I think that they're already incorporated into the version that you have in front of you, but I just want to note them in case anyone reviewed the ones that were sent out last night. On page four, the last paragraph where it starts discussion follow. So it read discussion followed regarding changing living area, and she just suggested the be incorporated in there. In that same paragraph, second sentence said discussion follow regarding changing, and that was changed to follow D E D. And then at the last statement, she got a little confused where it said Mr. Marzullo stated they should leave the proposed amendment as is, and the board agreed to move forward with this proposed text amendment. So I just added in the as is again to emphasize there's been no change relative to what was proposed before. On page five. Second to last paragraph that says Mr. Chairman Fisher gave his chairman's report. Around the third line from the bottom, there was a but and the subdivision standards apply, so we just removed the and. So all of those amendments were incorporated into the original text as we currently have it. It's just different from the draft that was sent out last night.
Page two.
Page two.
Under Jim Larson, the second paragraph, the last line. I think that should be B one lots in those areas instead of plots.
Any other suggestive revisions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended with the plot being changed to lots.
So move.
Moved by Engelmann. Second, if I crew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved as amended. Moving on to old business, we've completed a second review of the proposed amendments that we were looking to make to the zoning resolution. Including the fueling and charging station, the floor area, living space, living area, adult family homes and institutions for community care and setbacks and water requirements and conservation developments. So that's the item E, the potential creation of a B four district in the corner of Bellis and Oakley Hills. Let me pull up our. So again, this is a second reading of this. At the first reading, we created a potential B four district and we started to work through what items we thought should be permitted and conditional is going to be for if a B four is created. So we can continue to look at whether we want to create a B four. Again, another option that I think works well with the comprehensive plan is to move that area to the B two district. But if we want to keep making new B four based upon the differences that we felt were important between the B two and this area, certainly this is what we started as a working version. So we, we kept offices, professional and corporate spaces being permitted within the B four. If there's any objections or you want to comment on any of these, these items, let me know.
Is this the first time we're looking through what would be actually part of a B four district?
This table?
Yeah.
That we created this table four or five meetings ago. And in fact, I have highlighted some of the items like restaurant and tavern and nightclubs. If you might recall, we had a lot of discussion on those two, and so we placed them as conditional right now, but we wanted to have more robust discussion on those topics. So this table was all mapped out the last time we discussed the B four and what items we thought might be appropriate for the B four. So continuing on retail and completely enclosed space, less than 12,000 square feet, we felt would be permitted, which is consistent with all of the other districts. We removed B four currently allows as a condition, because remember that the B four, the proposed B four district is currently B one district. So there is a distinction in that the B one allows for retail in a completely enclosed building. It's a conditionally permitted use. We've removed that as a conditionally permitted use within the B four. So the only retail within a B four district would be retail completely enclosed, less than 12,000 square feet. We retained within the B four district, personal services in a completely enclosed building. We've retained within the B four, banks, savings and loan associations and credit unions. We've retained within the B four as conditionally permitted use lawn, garden and nursery sales and services. We've retained within the B four drive up or drive through windows in association with a permitted or conditional use. We've retained as a conditionally permitted use outdoor displays associated with the permitted or conditional use. Currently, we have changed restaurant from a permitted use as allowed right now in the B one district to a conditional use for the B four district. We want to have more discussion on that one. That one was one of the ones that we highlighted that we had a lot of discussion on last time.
So is this something that we're looking to include in the next text amendment that we're going to move forward with?
This was what we were looking, this was one of the topics that we've been looking to move forward with as part of this text. If I want to bump it off, we can certainly do that. That would be part of this discussion is if you feel that we should hold off on this one and look at it next time, that would be okay as well. What are your thoughts, Mr. Marzullo? You seem a little.
Well, I mean, I'm, obviously we're looking to create a new zoning district. And I don't know that that's necessarily something we need to do with this text amendment.
I kind of think it's, you know, it's not broken or nothing happening there. Why, I think maybe we ought to just set this aside and try to then create a new area, new district.
It's fine. My preference again has always been moving to B two, which again, I think as we talked about this, the reason that we felt like a B four is more appropriate was the idea that the B two allows for automobile refueling stations and the B four, I believe as our discussion, we decided not to allow that. I scroll down and find it. Yeah, we removed it as a conditionally permitted use with B four, but that's why, that was one of the precipituses for having it as a separate district as opposed to the B two district. But.
As well as removing hospitals, medical clinics, et cetera, and senior citizen.
Correct.
So there's quite a difference.
There is something different.
Four and B two.
Right.
And to leave it B one, you know, is for that area is really, you know, if you had a choice between one and two, B two would be more appropriate because it's a, it's within a residential area, but I don't think it should be dropped entirely. I mean, if, if we need to have more discussion to more thoroughly.
It, to me, it seems like we may be rushing into creating a new district when we haven't necessarily decided, okay. Is this, first off, does it not fit in the B three? And I don't know that we ever actually like really explored that a plane.
The reason that I would not be in favor of it in B three is because we allow for most of the B three to be occupied. So 80% of the surface space can be occupied by parking in buildings. So that would be a disadvantage to B three, whereas remember the B one does not allow for as much of the site to be developed.
To be built up.
Right. Because we think of B three as much more of a town.
Town center.
Center. Aspect area. So that would be a consideration, but absolutely, these are certainly areas that we can discuss further. We can remove it from this text amendment and, and bring it back up. I mean, with these working copies still exist, so we don't have to restart from scratch if we decide to do that. Ms. Crew?
I thought we talked about all of this at length, several meetings worth. But if, if, you know, I'm not in any rush to go through it tonight. You know, if you want to hold off and leave it, that's fine, but I do remember us spending quite a bit of time on this before. So. I mean, I have no, I'm not opposed to tabling it for now.
It sounds like we have a consensus on tabling, or at least enjoying the consensus. And so I think that that seems to be an appropriate thing to do. The final topic of the review is the restoration, requirements for restoration on forming buildings. I believe that that's chapter eight, that's helped me, and it's a relatively simple change. If you remember that we allowed for two years for construction from restoration for any non. I think it's non-conforming buildings, I believe was the, was the standard. And so given that it can take quite some time for insurance to, to move through the process, assuming that it's a fire, good total destruction, loss of property or a home, we just moved it to say that they had to, I think, commence. Commence, there it is. The restoration and damage buildings or structures, it has to, the restoration shall commence within two years as opposed to be completed within two years, which we thought was a reasonable period for them to be able to work through the insurance and begin the restoration process.
Now, if someone, for whatever reason, weren't able to begin construction within two years, there's still the B Z A to go through. They can show, hey, look, I had this, this and this, and that's why I wasn't able to.
Arche.
Yeah.
That would be your, call my comment.
That's what I did. I'm sorry, what was that?
I was asking Inspector Wilson, that would be consistent with what he would think as well as that.
Yeah, I agree with, with, we haven't had too much of that really in the last seven years. We've had quite a few people not do anything like a permit or something, but this is different when you're talking about reconstruction or something. And like you say, you can go to the B Z A if they get tight on that schedule.
So outside of that, that finishes the old business. That would bring us to new business, which was just very minor grammatical edits. We can go through them quick, and I will also remove all the B four stuff so we have a kind of working copy that's consistent with what we were discussing today as we move forward. Through gateway, we're capitalizing the T in township for consistency. The definition of gateway. Non-conforming law and non-conforming structure, it was just worded slightly different. And so Suzanne had suggested that we make those consistent. So the wording for non-conforming structure was a building or structure existing when the zoning resolution or any amendment thereto became effective. Up above, it said a lot existing on the effective date of the zoning resolution or any amendment or any amendments thereto. So we just reworded with the when and then became effective to make it consistent. I didn't see anything substantive that was being changed there. This is another one of those where we just had 12, we spelled out the word consistency with the book. We, there was a missing end quote or street public, so that was revised. Here, it's again, this is the convention that we normally have followed 15 parentheses percent, so we just follow it here for consistency. This one, there's a typo here, and I'm not sure how to correct it. And so maybe you can, one of you can read it and identify what the correction is. If not, we'll just leave it for now. But Suzanne pointed it out to me. So this has to do with, this is in the definition, definition section for adult, adult and sexual oriented businesses, yes, sexually oriented businesses. And so there was this statement here. "The act of exposing, placing, posting, exhibiting, or in any fashion displaying in any location, whether public or private, an item in such a manner that it may be readily seen in its content or character distinguished by normal unaided vision, viewing it from the street, highway, or public walkway, or from the property of others, and then or from any portion of the premises where items and material other adult material are on display to the public." I didn't know if it was other than, but that's still to me to read correctly for a public display. So again, I didn't know how to wordsmith it correctly.
You just remove other adult material.
Or do you think if there's an or?
So if we change or, we still have the material other.
Oh, you'll have to, excuse me, I meant or other. So we're material or other adult material.
Where items and material or other?
Oh, I see what you mean. I got you.
I think all of that, I think or other adult material should be removed.
Yeah.
So where items are on display to the public?
So what you're, that, yeah, should be removed. So items and material are on display to the public. I think that makes sense. Yes?
Or. Or other material are on display to the public.
For items and material, items or material, it should be or, but.
So I, I, I think it may be items or material other than, because ultimately what, what that portion of the, of the sentence is saying is, all right, if you're going to post anything, exhibit anything, it can't be viewed from a street, a highway, public sidewalk, from the property others.
Right.
Basically, any place where there isn't sexually explicit material, we want it to be not visible from places where there is not sexually explicit material available. And by saying or material other than adult material, that's another, that's another shop that is not selling it sexually explicit material. So we want to make sure anything that you post is not visible from there as well. That, that would be my interpretation of it. It's, it's a very, it is a very wordy sentence.
Super convoluted.
Yes.
Definition.
So basically, if a kid walks into, you know, a candy shop that is right next to a sexually explicit material shop, they're not able to see it.
Right.
And I think that's kind of what they're.
I understand the concept, but I think.
Because it's not. An item in such a manner that it may be readily seen in its content or character distinguished
But I think it says it in the beginning of the sentence, what it is. And then it's just saying can't be seen from.
It's, it's trying to define all the different types of properties that it can't be seen from.
That's why, I didn't even know if we wanted to touch this. That's why I commented on it because I'm like, I almost think that somehow we need, someone needs to go through and trace what, how this impacts the adult materials, because again, this is really a definition section and figure out what they're talking about when they say this public display. I almost think that this definition needs to be rewritten. So that's why I didn't think, I couldn't edit it and I didn't know if we just wanted to throw in as grammatical, because again, I don't know what it should be, but I worry about, about how to, how to word that correctly without going through and deep diving into how it's used in the actual book.
I can look it up in other areas and see what others are doing for it.
Good. So we won't do anything with that now. So, okay?
I agree, need to understand, I, I think that's logical, other than, but it could be or other. So I think if we can look at the history of the change.
Unless, I'm not, I'm not stating I'm going to be able to get the history of that change, but I'll look at other areas for the definition. Trying to go back to the records in minutes is.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
Especially on items like this, because we don't.
Christmas season, we're all.
Maintain clean working copies of this. You know, I have on mind, I have versions each time after we've changed, you know, after each meeting, so I know the changes that we've made.
But you don't, they're not with the minutes.
They're not with the minutes. They're not with the township. They're just.
Correct.
Because they're not formal documents of creation.
Let's, let's flag it for something in the new year, and I think it, whatever, whatever the pretext is, I mean, we can still look at it and say, all right, what does it need to say? Really, really the history of it.
Right.
For this specific definition is probably of little importance.
Yeah, I just think we need to understand where that fits into the book.
Yes.
And even consider just changing that to simplify that definition because it's too complicated. But I, we won't do anything with it here because, so section 4.2, we had a 15, just added in the word 15 in front. 250, same thing. This I'm going to reject because this was if we included a D of B four. And 5.4, we had a certificate shall be obtained for land use or building use changes required in chapter 12 enforcement, that's a zoning certificate, so we called zoning certificate throughout the book, so we just amended that for consistency. Going to reject this. Maybe I would talk about last. There. And again, I'm skipping the substantive topics that we talked about last time and agreed that the language was okay. This was just, again, adding 50, no, sorry, this was actually a change that we made substantively with respect to conservation developments, so that's why that's actually a numerical value change. There was a random square between square and feet, so that's been removed and space added in its place. Nothing too complex. Adding the word two for two units. That's a substantive change that we agreed to make. That's the main change. This all had to do with, if there was a creation of B four, other things that would have to modify or incorporate, so. That's again, just a spelling out of a numerical number. Capitalization of T. Spelling out of a number. This is a substantive change, we just renamed it for definition automotive repair. This is just a spelling out of a number. Spelling out of a number. Rewriting it the way that we have written it throughout the book as 15% instead of the 15% as you saw there. That's an injection. That's a, just, it already said 20, so you just put the number in parentheses. These are all changes that we discussed at the last meeting. Oh, this is, we did not discuss this last time. When we got to off-street waiting spaces for drive-through facilities, we had an item five. It, it used to say gas stations and then gasoline pump islands, and so I just admitted that to be more consistent with what we have in our definition. So it's automobile refueling, charging station, and then a refueling, recharging pump island. Any concerns there?
No.
Adding in a new district, or a lot of population throughout the books. This was just, again, spelling out a number. And that's it. So the question becomes, we've completed our old business and new business for tonight. The question is, do we want to go ahead and make a motion to forward this to the planning commission? Do we want to, and then we would of course have to set a date certain for a public hearing, which would be in January? Or do we want to wait and continue discussions in January with some one or, or multiple additional topics? Where do you want to go with this at this point?
Personally, I think we've put a lot into the, the changes that are already in there, and I think it's worthwhile to move it forward and get into the book rather than continuing to take it down the road.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to make it to amend the, the zoning resolution. Um, resolution. As we've discussed and with what we have up there, with the changes that we've made tonight.
Perfect. Motion by Marzolo.
Second.
Second, my crew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Any opposed? Oh, posts? So the we will approve of this, it will be placed hopefully on the planning commission for. January, we have to do a submission by tomorrow for it to be placed on the agenda for the planning commission for Wednesday, January third. Our next meeting is Thursday, the January the fourth. Uh, we do have to set a public hearing to occur, I think, within forty-five days of today's motion, and so I had to entertain a motion. To set a public hearing for six thirty P M on January the fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So.
Good question. I'm sorry. Organizational minutes, organization.
Correct.
I looked this time, we had the organizational at seven.
Okay.
And then we had our our regular meeting immediately thereafter.
Do we need to have the organizational before we have the public hearing? I believe we may. Because it sets, it it ultimately, it sets our rules for running our meetings.
So do we want to have the public hearing at seven, organizational meeting at six thirty?
That may be the best course of action.
We can get through our organizational within thirty minutes, I would think.
Generally speaking.
Perfect. Then we'll do that. Uh, so we would set our public, we would set our organizational for six thirty, we would have our public hearing at seven, and we would have our regular meeting to follow.
I believe so.
Is that good?
Would you still like to make a motion, Mr. Man?
Yeah, I still amended, yes.
Second.
He's so moved.
Moved by Manley, seconded by Marzolo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
Perfect. So to recap. Medina Planning Commission meeting on this proposed amendment should take place January third. I think it's seven P M, is that the planning commission seven, isn't it? Seven P M. So they're here, January third. Uh, so we should have results back by January fourth, our January fourth meeting will have our organizational meeting at six thirty, we'll have our public hearing at seven. And then we will have our regular meeting to follow the end of the public hearing.
Planning commission is at six thirty, I hope.
Six thirty, six thirty is for the planning. All right. Anything else before I move on to chairman's report? Just stop sharing for one second, we want to transition. So. As you all are aware by now. We received, hello, the planning services received a concept plan. For. The sanctuary court, uh, this concept plan. This proposed subdivision is on the approximately forty acres that is across from Arborcrest. So if you remember, we've had multiple discussions about what used to be a sixty acre lot. There was a sixty acre lot, they had a proposal for that, that's a subdivision within that sixty acre lot. There's been a series of events, they initially was, were planning on putting the subdivision entrance off of Don Pre. They then flipped it on to three oh three, O dot denied them the right to access the sub, the subdivision from three oh three. The ownership then changed at least of some of this parcel, it was lot split. At our, they then put a cul-de-sac on Don Pre for the single sub, single lot. And now they're coming back with a proposed. Uh, development on the remaining thirty-six or thirty-eight acres. Of the lot. It appears that all of these lots do conform to our zoning code. Inspector Wilson, do you have anything else to add at this point?
No, I I mean, we went through it, and it looks like, you know, all the lots are the correct size and the. Running control force.
Yeah, this this one lot, and it's difficult to. This, this one lot is very unusual. This front lot, S L one, it's it's almost a triangle, and they have a very little, you know, very small buildable space that that forms a triangle, so it will be interesting what they do there. But I think that they have both water and sewer, if I'm not mistaken, so they they won't have to worry about. Primary and septic and secondary septic sites. So that the concept plan will take place with Modia Planning Services on December twentieth of twenty twenty-three at nine A M. Does the zoning commission have any comments that they would like me to submit on the zoning commissions we have?
We noted in our report that there's some wetlands they need to consider and so forth. You know, it's. Maybe a couple lots here.
This one down here has.
Particular, but.
That will be an EPA determination.
Yeah.
Whether.
Yeah, it's another. Determination.
Any else, or can we move on? The only other announcement that I have is that there is, the the township trustees are accepting. Resumes or applications for both a zoning member position and alternate positions for the zoning commission, as well as alternate positions for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, any applications are due by December fifteenth noon. And so if there is anyone interested in applying for the zoning commission or the. Board of Zoning Appeals strongly encourage you to do so by December fifteenth at noon. Uh, the next regular, uh, the next regular zoning commission meeting will take place January fourth. Again, that will be immediately following the public hearing. Uh, with the organizational meeting to be, to occur prior to that regular meeting, the organizational meeting being at six thirty P M. I have nothing else. Ms. Crew.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Marzolo.
Nothing.
Mr. Meall?
Nothing, no.
Well, as you know, I'll be starting trustee January one, and so resigning from zoning commission as of December thirty-first. And I just want to say it's been a a pleasure to work with everybody on commission the last couple of years. I enjoy the work, I will miss you guys, but I won't be far. Wish everybody well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank all of you for serving our township. It's been my honor and distinct pleasure to work with all of you, and I wish you luck in the future.
Mrs. Cho. Mr. Wilson. Anyone in the public?
Have I read Christmas?
And happy new. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-nine P M.
So moved.
Moved by crew.
Second.
Second in my Marzolo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.